What time we got? Welcome, everyone. It is now six thirty-one. We're one minute behind. I apologize. We do have some folks that I want to mention real quick. The election, which was on November the fourth, we've got some people who were affected by that election. And to my left, two seats over, is Brandon Whitfield, and he's your mayor-elect, who will take his position on January the first, or maybe in December sometime. We'll have to work all that out. You want to say hello?
Hello.
See how easy it is? And to my immediate left is Melanie Long, who was re-elected to the city council. And then our audience, if they would stand up, we have Wes Johnson, who was elected to the council, and we have Keith Caulkwood, who was elected to the council. Congratulations to all four. Appreciate you stepping up. And they do have a mental hospital in Monroe. Keep that in mind. But it is a lot of fun. Before we go on, a roll call for tonight. Everybody's here and everybody's in place. That's wonderful. We need a motion to approve the agenda, please.
So moved.
Or any adjustments thereof. Any adjustments thereof, Lisa?
Do we have adjustments?
I'm sorry.
To the agenda?
Yes, I need to make a motion to amend. Is that what you're asking?
It's time.
Yes, okay. I was reading my motion. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to strike off item 2D or replace it with a discussion for planning and zoning commission.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion. We have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The adjustment to the agenda is approved. Okay? And now we'll move on to our planning and development committee report. Lisa Newberry.
Okay, Mayor, tonight we have item 2A, which is case B twenty-five dash zero-one-eight. Robbie will come up and read the case into record and tell us about staff recommendation, planning and zoning commission, also about the history. Remind us of the timeline of this case. And then after that, we'll open up the public hearing for the applicant, the public to speak. And then we'll close the public hearing, go back to mayor and council for discussion.
Thank you. The case before you is case number V two-five zero-one-eight. Green River Builders, Inc., care of Mahaffey Pickens Tucker, L.L.P., has requested a major variance for the property located at Highway twenty and Tuck Road, Loganville, Georgia three-zero-zero-five-two. Map and parcel number LG zero-six zero-zero-one-zero. LG zero-six zero-zero-one-zero A zero-zero. LG zero-six zero-zero-one-zero ADP. LG zero-six zero-zero-one-zero DP. LG zero-six zero-zero-zero-nine. LG zero-six zero-zero-one-one. The present zoning is PUV. The ordinance and section from which the relief is being sought is zoning ordinance one-nineteen twenty-two-twenty-one D-two, which is the request for a variance to allow alternative building permit concurrency schedule. As you'll remember, last year, this property was zoned for the PUV. At that time, they had filed for a variance, for this same variance. It was denied at the time. They tried to bring it back, back in March, to see if y'all would want to hear it again. Y'all chose not to, so there's just been a year, so there's allowed for this variance to come back before you. Just a reminder, your discussion tonight is only variance only. We will not be rezoning the property or anything like that. All we're doing is addressing the variance as it stands. The condition itself is, if you'll remember, the PUV was designed for the three different categories to be developed at twenty-five percent increments, which means if we have townhomes, you have single-family houses, and you have commercial, each category can only have twenty-five percent built and COs issued before they can move on to the next twenty-five percent. The applicant has asked for the variance to switch that to seventy-five-twenty-five. Staff recommendation was denial for that. After, at the planning commission, it was discussed further. And the planning commission offered its support to a fifty-twenty-five-twenty-five building concurrency schedule. And that's all that I have.
Okay, thank you, Robbie. So as the applicant comes to the podium, I'll go ahead and declare this portion of the meeting open as a public hearing for this matter.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Shane Lanham with Mahaffey Pickens Tucker, fifteen-fifty North Brown Road, Suite one-twenty-five in Lawrenceville. Here on behalf of the applicant, as Mr. Schwartz indicated, requesting your approval of a variance relative to the project timeline for a PUV. As Mr. Schwartz indicated, our original application requested reduce the twenty-five-twenty-five, twenty-five-twenty-five increments in four phases to just two, with, you know, most of the development occurring in a first phase of seventy-five percent for all building types. When we saw staff did not support that, recommended denial against it, we sort of went back and said, okay, what, you know, what can we propose as an alternative that helps solve some of the issues that we're looking at, but still tries to stay as close as possible to the spirit and intent of that section of the ordinance? And so that's how we settled on that, really, three-phase plan, call it. So the first phase would be fifty percent of each building type. Once COs are issued for the first fifty percent of each building type, then we could move on to the second phase. But it goes back to the smaller phasing of twenty-five percent each. And so really, what that does in practical terms is it allows us to get enough residential units, call it, on the ground that makes the commercial components more attractive to potential tenants. And so in the past year, since the property was rezoned, we've seen a lot of interest from commercial tenants. We have no doubt about the viability of the commercial space. We have no doubt about being able to deliver that. What has been a consistent issue that's come up in those discussions with tenants has been the timing. You know, two main things in, you know, simple terms, maybe oversimplifying, but, you know, commercial users love to look out their front door or the back door and see the customer base, right? They like to see the rooftops that are, you know, as many as you can get, as close as you can get, really. It helps. I mean, and it makes sense in practical terms because that's a built-in customer base adjacent to the property. So that helps them have more confidence in their success at that location. It helps them pay higher rents. That helps the viability of the project overall. But additionally, you know, as y'all know, with the proposed Highway twenty widening and improvement, as well as the realignment of Tuck Road at Sharon Church, I think it is, with the proposed roundabout, that project has been delayed a couple times, including another recent delay, where we learned that, it's my understanding, that the project was originally supposed to go out to bid in June of twenty-twenty-five, and that was pushed back a year. So now the project isn't going to go out to bid until June of twenty-twenty-six, based on the latest that we've heard. And we've also heard that they don't have all of the right-of-way necessary for the project anyways. And so there's, you know, things can happen concurrently, right? And you can have projects out to bid while the right-of-way acquisition is finalized. But what that does is that creates a situation where commercial tenants are looking at it and saying, well, so my grand opening is going to be in the middle of a big road project, and my access is going to be all dirty and dusty, and people can't see my, you know, grand opening signs and things like that. Access is a little tricky. It makes them a little hesitant, just based on the timing. I think, long-term, the site, they're very interested. But that's created some challenges for us. And so with some additional residential critical mass, we think we can overcome that. It helps us get the project off the ground and moving in the right direction. So appreciate y'all's consideration. I'd be happy to answer any specific question. But that's a little bit of additional background, and just to try to get y'all up to speed on some of the efforts that we've undergone so far. I'll also mention, post-zoning, you know, as is typical, you'll do some additional site inspections and environmental testing. We actually discovered that there's an additional creek on the property that runs basically right through the middle of the place. We knew about the creek on the eastern side of the property, but that also disrupted, you know, runs right through the middle of the property. It also disrupted the potential commercial layout. So we had to sort of shuffle some things around. That took some engineering and some working on that to try to figure out, and also learning from prospective tenants, what their preferences were. So that disrupted the timeline as well. The residential is, it can adapt to that kind of thing much more easily and handily. So again, I'll stop there. I appreciate y'all's consideration. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Shane. We'll go ahead with the public hearing and continue on. So is there anyone here tonight that would like to come up to the podium and speak in favor of this project? Anyone in favor? Okay, seeing none, is there anyone that would like to come up and speak in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Okay, seeing none, Shane, there's no reason to rebuttal. All right, so we'll turn this back, we'll close the public hearing at this point, and turn this back over to mayor and council for discussion. Who would like to go first?
Okay, anyone have any pertinent questions?
A few questions. I can start.
Okay.
So just backing up, you were kind of giving us a review of it. When did we first approve this?
Twenty-four.
October twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four.
October twenty-twenty-four. Okay, so October twenty-four. And I will start off and say, so twenty projects still coming, obviously. You mentioned that it was scheduled. Of course, it's, you know, hate to go there, but it's been underway for twenty years, right? But it is coming. You knew in October twenty-four that it was coming, it wasn't going to make that time. Right now, it's scheduled for, I believe it's February, but the funding was moved to twenty-twenty-seven, which puts it in that June timeframe. So anyway, so I just, it keeps coming up, and I'm having a hard time every time it comes up, how this affects, you know, how this affects the whole project. Because it's been there the entire time. It's been there for twenty years. We're at the point where it's going to come. I just want to make that statement. So you, the city, Robbie, and this is, you brought up the fifty-twenty-twenty-five approach. I mean, is that, I know what your staff recommendation was. Did it change any based on the proposed, or is that just?
Well, again, it kind of came from the initial staff report. The seventy-twenty-five, I did not believe, met the spirit and the intent of the concurrency schedule. So that is why it was denied. And when I was contacted by them, they were asking this simple question. Well, what can we do to get staff support? And I said, well, staff support's kind of already gone right now, so. But I did discuss it with him, and it was felt that it, the fifty-twenty-five-twenty-five is basically just combining the first two phases. So it still allows us to maintain what I believe is the intent of it, was making sure that somebody doesn't come in and build just residential and bail, or somebody just doesn't come in and build commercial and leave. So I believe it still upholds the intent of the PUV concurrency schedule, and it's just a compromise with the applicant to bring something that may be more viable to the council.
Okay, so kind of was it, you all had, you had that discussion with the client, the applicant?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And obviously, the intent of the whole thing was to be able to make sure that as we go through this project, or it develops such that there is commercial toward the end. What about, what about the amenities? If you're going to propose this breakdown, does that change how the amenities are going to be delivered?
A lot of times, especially on, you know, communities like this that have some size, you want to not necessarily do everything at once, but you want to do enough at first that really generates some interest, right? So we've got an interest selfishly to, or incentive to build those a little earlier because when prospective residents come view it, they say, oh, look at those nice, you know, greens. Look at the central, you know, common area. Look at the pool. Look at the patio. So we have an incentive on doing some of that stuff earlier. I don't think the zoning conditions or the PUV ordinance specify any of that, but I think just roughly, it was our intention to do probably that, at least the main amenity area within probably Phase One or Phase Two on the earlier side.
Okay. Thank you, Lisa.
Okay. Who have y'all partnered with to do your commercial?
So Green River, the applicant is, you know, running that process. I think they've engaged some market consultants and obviously real estate brokers to help them identify tenants.
So you don't have anybody on, you haven't contracted with anybody yet specifically?
I can't, I can't share any specific names of tenants, and that's been the challenge. I think we've talked to-
I'm not asking for tenants. Who have you contracted with to build the commercial part? Because I know originally, when we zoned this PUV, Green River said they were residential. They weren't commercial, and they had not partnered with a commercial builder. So I'm asking who the commercial builder is that you have partnered with at this point? Because obviously, if you're looking to move forward and build fifty percent of your commercial, you're not just pulling that out of the air. You have somebody in mind that's going to build that. I'd like to know who that is.
I don't personally have that information, but is there?
Okay. Okay. And then you're claiming hardship because of GDOT, and as Bill said, this project's been coming for years and years. You've known GDOT was going to come. And one of the reasons you're claiming hardship is we, you've been telling us in the past, we can't build the commercial because we don't know where the road's going. We don't know how things go. And now you're asking us to allow you to build fifty percent of the commercial at one time. It's like a-
No, that's not, I wouldn't characterize it that way.
Okay.
I don't think I've said that we can't physically do it. I think the latest project drawings that we viewed, I think we have a pretty good idea of where the right-of-way line is going to be. And so specifically tonight, what I was talking about was the, a lot of the practical aspects, right? Where we've heard from prospective commercial tenants and end-users that they say, okay, well, if I, you know, sign a lease, and I've got obligations to open at a certain time, or I've got obligations to finish my building at a certain time, when I do my grand opening, which is an important event, you know, the beginning is important for a lot of those users, it, at a minimum, you know, complicates that experience if they're opening up in the middle of a big road construction project. And so I think a lot of those commercial users are saying, well, maybe on the backside. You know, we can have a discussion down the road once the mess has been cleaned up, you know, in very practical, oversimplified, you know, terms. I think it's not necessarily been that it's impossible because we have no idea where the road is going. But it is, that physical construction along the property's road front is just one of those major factors that's impeded our ability to secure users for that commercial space.
So you haven't partnered with a commercial builder. When do you anticipate starting groundbreaking this project?
So if the variances were approved, I think we would go into that engineering and design phase, which we've been holding off on doing while trying to gain certainty on the commercial users because we're tied to it, right? So if the variance were approved this week, you know, we've got a week or two before, you know, a lot of the world goes into hibernation for Thanksgiving and Christmas and New Year's and all that sort of stuff. So, but at least a few months of engineering and design work. So that gets us into, you know, first or second quarter of twenty-six easily. And then we submit, go through the permitting process, and maybe budget another few months for that. So really, groundbreaking wouldn't happen until summer of twenty-six at the earliest.
And so you would be, because you won't get any COs on your residential until you've built your commercial. So by February, or what did you, what did you just say, twenty-twenty-six?
So we anticipate, you know, with some assumptions built in, being able to break ground summer of twenty-six.
Summer of twenty-six?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then, as Bill pointed out a while ago, probably the GDOT project that the funding is available would start in February of twenty-seven.
No.
What did you, what'd you say, Bill?
As early as July, they could let this thing to construction.
Okay. Where did somebody said February a while ago?
I think it was like going out to bid.
Going out to bid, okay.
I think that was the marker.
Okay, all right.
And my point, just to be clear too, I mean, I see that what you're looking for. It's the whole mixed use, the see your customers. That's the focus. I just really wanted to bring up the Stay-Rout Twenty project because it's an important project. There's five other council members and a mayor we're working hard with, is a project. I mean, we have, we have a considerable investment in it. And I, it's coming. I don't want, I don't want any of the council members to sit up here because we've got decisions that we have to make on it as we go forward. We've got utilities to move. So I want you to make sure that we're, GDOT is committed, and we are too, so. That was really my point.
When's the last meeting y'all have had with GDOT, Shane?
I haven't met with GDOT, but I think we check in with them.
Okay, well, did they give you any? Can we get this gentleman a microphone, please? That's okay.
Come on up.
So like I was saying, I believe the GDOT issue is for the most part out of our hair as far as developing the commercial. I think timing, a year ago, when we first discussed it, we were concerned that it was going to be at the same time, and it was going to be catastrophic. Now, with them putting it back a year, so to speak, I believe we can kind of get in there before them and identify where the lines are, so to speak, you know, where the roads are. And again, we can get our commercial folks situated. If we can get the residential people in, the commercial people will follow. And, you know, GDOT will happen somewhere after that, and they'll just deal with it. They'll have a way in and a way out. The variance is the concurrency. So really, the GDOT doesn't have a lot to do with it. It's more about, we've been meeting with a lot of commercial stores, vendors, and such. And the idea is, to them, it's more important than it is to us. In other words, they want to see houses before they commit to putting a store in. So that's where the concurrency comes in.
There are houses all around there that I can see when I'm over there. Can they not see those houses?
I'm sure they can.
I mean, why do they have to have your houses there?
It's your zoning. It's this PUV. It's, you could walk to the store.
How many houses will be fifty percent?
So the original zoning was, I think, we're somewhere around four hundred units.
Give or take two hundred, yeah.
Right.
So that's with multifamily and/or-
That's all, all the residential.
Right, all the residential units. So call it four hundred, use an even number.
Total, yeah.
Four hundred total. It would be, so two hundred units in the first phase, and then-
Of the fifty, yeah, okay.
And then, yeah.
And then another hundred, and then another hundred.
Okay. I went back and watched because I remembered you and I had a conversation back in October of twenty-four. So I went back and watched the tape just to see if my memory was what it was. And it was, kind of. You said during that meeting that, because you and I talked about GDOT pretty significantly because that was my concern from the get-go, is we didn't know how much they were going to, of your parcel, they might need because they have, you know, some coming that red, they're going to put a red light or something up there, and they've got to straighten it out with North Sharon. Or, you know, not a red light, the-
Roundabout.
Roundabout, thanks, yeah. So that was going to be some variance there. And you said that y'all had accounted for GDOT in your design flexibility. So I don't, and of course, you knew GDOT was coming back then. It had already rescheduled, I think, several times by twenty-four, has it? Is that true, Bill? They've rescheduled?
They have.
Yeah, so this, this is not, this is not the first time by any stretch of the imagination. And we just, like I said, we discussed it. And you said that the project would be further down, the GDOT project would be further down the road before GDOT engages. Basically, what you're saying today, you said back in October. How will GDOT impact development? You said it would not. When I asked about GDOT in ten-twenty-four, there did not appear to be any concern. So I don't understand why the concern is now.
So I think it's, I think it's two different aspects here that are being conflated. The first is physical construction and location of structure and improvements on the property.
Okay.
We had a high level of confidence of where the road improvements were going to happen based on those design drawings, based on the roundabout location, the realignment of Sharon and Tuck. And so relative to, is the GDOT road project going to cause physical, is it going to have physical impact on the property? We had a high confidence level that that was not likely going to happen because their engineering drawings were, you know, pretty far down the road. There's not a lot of, you know, wiggle room, sort of, once you've identified that project scope. So in that sense, we feel like we knew at a minimum where the right-of-way lines were going to go, right? And so there was, the roadway could maybe meander within those right-of-way lines, but we had certainty there. So that wasn't going to affect us. I think what, you know, I mentioned in comments tonight, and we described in the letter of intent, is partially that practical aspect where, you know, I think we're saying that there have been some commercial tenants that have expressed a little bit of heartburn about, you know, if they're going to open in the middle of a construction project, that's concerning. But as Mr. Benson mentioned, a lot of it is also having the, you know, the residential critical mass in place. Because, yeah, there are residences nearby, but not enough to support the proposed commercial. That's part of the PUV, right? Like it, it, it likely wouldn't be, and I'm no expert, and I don't have a crystal ball, but I wouldn't think that that level of commercial would be viable without the residential to support it, right? I mean, I think that's the, kind of, the whole thing with the PUV is that it's self-supporting. It has its own center of gravity. It has its own built-in customer base with people being able to walk from their house to go get dinner, or go get ice cream, or do all that sort of happy stuff. And so the commercial tenants are saying, well, you know, our, especially when you're wanting sort of higher-tier concepts, you know, they require a lot more residential critical mass because the, you know, the per-capita customer base is more spread out. So you need a lot of people nearby to support your business. I think they're saying, well, we don't want to be part of that first wave, but it's a ghost town because there's not enough people there, and we fizzle out and we can't- cause there's not enough people there and we fizzle out and we can't pay bills and then we've got empty storefronts within six months. Then the next tranche of commercial users look at it and say, what's the, what happened over there? They were open for six months, they closed already? Well, they couldn't support it, cause don't worry, there's more people coming in the next phase. Um, and lease some of this new commercial space. Don't just come into the space that just got vacated. So it's, it's that, it's, a lot of it has to do with that residential critical mass. And, you know, getting enough of an impact right out of the gate to gain some momentum and carry us through the, the final two phases. And so, um, that, that's a, hopefully that answered your question.
Let me ask you, why is this now, just now coming to the forefront? I mean, this is a major project, was a major from the get-go. Uh, did y'all not inquire with commercial individuals as to what they needed back then? Before you even got in the middle of all this? I mean, I don't know why it's coming up at this point in time, like several years after?
Well, it's, it's been a part of the project the whole time. You know, I mean, we did have that variance requested along with the initial PUV. Um, and when, you know, council declined to approve the variance then, you know, I think the, the, the property is so special. It's uniquely situated, um, state highway, which is about to be widened, 200 acres. I mean, what, how many 200 acre tracks, you know, are straddled going at Walton County line are there around? It's, it's a special opportunity and we just didn't want to let it go just because of, you know, that, that hurdle, right? I think, I think Green River remained committed to the family. The property owner remained committed to Loganville to try to bring this property out of the ground. And so we didn't say, ah, shucks, all right, set the clock, we'll wait six months and try again. And then if that doesn't work, we'll try it again. It's, we've been working on it the entire time, just trying to figure out every different way we can to, you know, get the project off the ground, which is, really, we want nothing more than to make this thing successful as soon as possible. So, um, you know, we've, 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 we've had a lot of different ideas on how to do that. I mean, we even, um, ha- had an idea where we would put up a bond, you know, that, that gives us some financial incentive that says we have to deliver a certain amount of commercial at a certain point. Uh, or, you know, there's, there's potential for bond forfeiture, you know? Really because it's, it's, it's not just because we want it, you know, the variance that is. Or it just, it just makes things easier. I mean, it is, it is a critical aspect of, of the project. And so we're trying to do everything we can to find a way to get that residential critical mass, come out of the gate strong, get that built-in customer base, while still, as, as Robbie mentioned, keep the city in control of development timing, big picture, right? Still hold our feet to the fire to deliver not just all the commercial, but all the residential units that we showed on the PUV. Um, but try to come up with a blend where the city's still protected, the city's still in control. We just get a little bit of flexibility on the front end to get a, just more momentum out of the gate.
Thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Robbie, I have a question, just to confirm something. Just, you sat down and I thought I need to get Robbie back up. So, um, when they build the first 50 resid- uh, first 200 residential?
Now, let's keep in mind, we, that's, they're gonna have to build, if they propose 20 townhomes, that'll be 10 townhomes. If they propose 200 houses, it'll be 100 houses. So just, just so you know.
Okay, so it's gonna be 50.
It's 50% of each category, it's not 50% residential, 50% commercial. It would be 50% single-family homes, 50% townhomes, 50% commercial.
Okay. What's the total on that? Is that the 400 that you told me?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So they will build 200 total of the townhouses and, uh, residences, correct?
Based off of the information we have at this point in time, yes.
On the commercial. My question is if they, they do their 50% on the residential and townhomes, uh, and decide they don't, they've got the same arguments on the commercial and it's not gonna be viable and that sort of thing, can they get a CO on the residential aspect of the community?
Only on that first 50%.
But they can get a CO on the resident, the, uh, townhomes and the personal residences?
Yes, they'll be, get issued COs. So even if, say if we go back to the original intent of the law.
Okay.
25% your first phase.
Okay.
They have to build 25% of the townhomes, 25% of the single-family homes and 25% of the commercial space before they can even break ground on the next stuff. We will not permit anything until those, those have been, have been completed.
So using that, the 25%, which is the law, um, they could hold off on the 25% commercial and just not get permitted for the next phase? Is that the penalty, so to speak?
They couldn't start the next phase.
Okay.
The next phase cannot start until the, everything has been met on the previous phase.
Is there any way they can come in here after the 50%, if it's approved by council, and file for another variance to hold off on the commercial?
It would have to come before y'all.
There is such a thing, just like this one. I guess it'd be the same as this one.
Um, yeah, I mean, they, it, yeah, but that would probably have to be a little bit more of a hardship since they've already started.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it's kind of been going on for a while and each hardship gets a little more definitive and, you know, just making an observation on that. I just wanted to make sure that they couldn't build a 50% residential on townhomes and then come back in and go, gee, we got another hardship, uh, so we're gonna have to go with another variance and here we sit. And you know what I'm trying to say.
Um, I, I think that they could probably get the impression of that answer based off of this meeting.
Okay, okay. I'm through, thank you.
Hey Patty, just so you know, I was looking at the thing. So half of the, uh, single-family lots, that'd be about 116 homes for 50%. And their total townhomes is 160, so that'd be 80. So it'd be 80 and 116 for the 50%.
Okay, that's what they basically said, 200, yeah, yeah. Thanks Melanie.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you and thank you Shane.
Um, I, I just, I want to kind of piggyback on what Bill said about the DOT and then I have just a little bit different angle to offer. Um, yes, the DOT's project's been in place for years and they can plan around it. But I'm gonna speak from experience with a client 10 years ago. So y'all may remember, um, that DOT did a widening on Georgia 20 in Buford, between the Mall of Georgia and the river. And I had a client that bought a business very close to where the, the city of Sugar Hill is. Bought the business and, um, shortly after DOT put a median in, which stopped all turning into that business. So from my background, I understand the reluctance of someone in the commercial side to pony up the money and it, until and unless they understand the impact of their business directly, based on the construction for the DOT. So while you understand and you know that the project's coming, the direct impact is not necessarily known and, and it is, it is a problem. So that, that's a true statement, even though the project was coming and they knew about it. So that's my only comment.
Well, going back to the fact that they're gonna be building 200 units, honestly, if they have the type of commercial that the, that they're implying they have, I don't see that that type of business would flop or not flop over 200 units when we have another 1,200,000 townhomes and things coming out of the ground now. There are people here to support the commercial, I believe that with all my heart.
Well, I agree with you, but, but my point is that if the DOT construction is such that it's difficult for someone to get into it, just physically be able to drive into it and they, they pass on by to go somewhere else, it, it's a real concern. I, I understand, I, I agree, I think there's plenty of residential to support, but.
I mean, and this, and 20 is gonna be median divided. So I mean, they've, they've already got that. Um, I just don't see, they, they're saying that they have a hardship, yet to me personally, they knew their hardship before they ever looked at the property. So I don't understand why, like Patty said, every six months we're having to hear that they have a hardship when the property already had a hardship from day one. So they, they should have taken that into account before they got this far into the game, I guess, is what I'm saying.
The PUV gives you more density, right?
That's pretty much the only benefit to it.
That's the incentive, I guess, possibly. I don't know. I don't think the incentive based on what you've been saying would be the commercial aspects. I think that's giving you a headache right now. Uh, so I'm, I'm assuming it might be the high density, I don't know, I don't, I'm not in your thoughts, but, uh, I just, you know.
You want to go next?
It's the way it works out.
Just for info, been reading about some other cities that's trying to do some of the same type of zoning. And they have really pushed and forced the construction of commercial. And they're having to open up with a lot of empty spaces. And we sure don't want that either. We want it built and occupied, doing business. And the intent of this zoning, just for those of you that don't know, the intent of it is that the folks that live there can get many of their personal services done inside that area, where they're not coming in and out all the time. That's the whole intent of the thing, so. We'll vote on that Thursday night, if that's okay, Lisa.
We're not, we're not done with questions.
You got another question?
Yeah, I got a couple. First off, I wanna talk about the, uh, I understand like you're asking the 50, 25, 25 and Robbie's saying that's, we're still kind of meeting our intent in doing so. And I do want to give an, you know, talk about a PUV real quick, cause I hear a lot of density talk. And yes, that is true, there is density involved in this project. But it's 200 acres, it's gonna be a good amount of homes, no matter what went on here. So a PUV, a lot of them, like I went and walked through, like Halcyon and other places and other towns. A lot of people are going, a lot of towns are going towards more mixed-use developments. Because if you can walk to and from, or bike ride, or golf cart to places, it keeps you out of your car. So, and I guess they're just gonna keep you out of your car all the time, you're still gonna have to go to your, you know, take your kids to daycare, stuff like that. Um, but this is kind of the better path to build forward and, so that's why I'm for mixed-use developments. So I think the biggest, I'll borrow one of Ann's words, rubs that I kind of get from the people in the community with this project. I know y'all still will have to resubmit, cause this is a site plan dependent zoning. So the site plan's still gonna have to come through us, through some form. I think the biggest rub I really see is the amount of townhomes. Is that? I gotta be careful here, cause I don't want to say anything that, are y'all committed to building that amount of townhomes that are on the plan?
I, I think the, the, the short answer is no. Um, we've actually post-zoning, and feel free to come up and kick me if, if, if I get this wrong. That's, so just candidly, I, I didn't plan to discuss any of this, this tonight, but that's, that's one of the things we've actually been talking a lot about internally, is in more market studies post-zoning, the single-family, we think, performs way better than the townhomes.
I agree.
And so you would think normally, it's like, oh, well, the developer wants as much density on as small lots as they can get. That's the moneymaker somehow, but actually that's not what the studies are showing. And so I, I don't think we've got it figured out yet, but the idea of doing a lot less townhomes and trying to make up for some of that in single-family detached, I think we still have to have some, cause that's what the PUV requires, is three distinct land use types. Um, but that's, so to answer your question, I, I think that is on the table.
It made me think about it when y'all started talking about the bonds. And if that would be like a condition that we could put on this for a bond rate, is there any way, Paul, that we could put a condition on this for when their site plan comes in to look at less dense zoning when it comes to the townhomes? Contingent on the 50, 25, 25, or is that something we exclusively have to wait for the site plan to come back? If they're willing to offer it?
Well, so what is approved on this rezone is this site plan.
Yeah.
So they're approved at 160 townhomes, 233 lots and approximately 205,000 square feet of commercial on the site plan. And so PUVs are just like any other PUD, PRD, that is a site plan zone-specific product. So if they want to change anything on this site plan, they gotta come back before y'all for a rezone, period in the story.
Are you saying this is approved?
This was approved in, um?
No, this isn't the site plan we approved.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, this is a different site plan.
Okay.
I was gonna say, they're gonna have to change the site plan.
The site plan that was approved in October of 24 is the site plan they are stuck with.
That's the 227 single-family, 158 townhomes and I didn't write down, uh, 280,000 square feet of commercial.
Okay, if they want something different, they have to rezone it to that new site plan.
Yes.
So this might be a mute point, cause they found a creek and they're gonna have to come back with a new site plan.
Well, let me point out, if you go back and watch, sorry, go ahead.
I just want to make sure I understand your question. Your question is, is, is if, if they want it, and I'm sorry, I thought that what was in the packet was the originally approved site plan. So the, the originally approved site plan is, is the four corners of the structure of the PUV that they're bound to. If they want to change that, they have to submit for a rezone to change that, because it's, it's what I call customized zoning, right? When you do a PUV, PUD, anything, it's customized zoning. They gave you a custom site plan, that's what they get. If they want to change it, they gotta come back before you for a rezone. Does that answer your question?
But that gives me another question. Hang on a second, because I'll forget. Can I get a turn tonight?
Okay.
But so if they have to come back for a rezone, are they, can they come back before the moratorium is up? Or would that put them outside the mor- they have to wait till the moratorium's up?
Uh, your, your staff is not authorized to accept rezone applications at this time pursuant to the moratorium. They are authorized to receive variance applications.
Yeah, it wouldn't be a rezone, it would just be a variance to the original site plan, right?
Not in my opinion, no. I'm sure Shane has a different opinion of that, but I'm pretty clear on that, that this is site zone, this is site plan specific zoning. PUVs are a PUD, Planned Urban Development. Y'all just happen to use a V instead of a D. And it's very clear, although, um, Shane and I can argue about that, uh, in, in another forum, that's totally fine. But, um, it's a rezone, is what it is. And I know Shane will disagree.
To understand, just to clarify, so if they make a site plan change, it's a rezone?
Hundred percent. That's the entire concept of PUDs. Y'all's just got named PUV for some reason that I don't understand. But the concept is pretty universal across the country, generally. PRDs, PUDs, PCDs, whatever you want to call them, they're planned districts. And the whole concept is, is that the property owner comes to you and says that your zoning classification doesn't quite give me everything I want, but I want to give you something that fits within the concept of your planned district. And once I give it to you, that's what I'm gonna build and I promise to build that. And if I'm going to build something differently, then I have to come back and get approval from you to make that change. So.
So to Brendan's point, is this a mute point tonight?
I'm sorry?
Is, is this a mute point? Do we need to continue discussion or we?
They have applied for a variance as to the concurrency of the development and y'all need to address that variance. The code right now requires this 25, 25, 25, 25, four phases of sort of what you call balanced billing, balanced building. Um, and if y'all want to entertain that variance, then y'all should entertain that variance, uh, either for approval or denial, or some approval to some in-between, you know, uh, structure.
Are y'all going to have to approve a new site plan?
Pardon?
Are y'all gonna have to bring us a new site plan?
I mean, I think we're gonna have to account for that, that creek on the property. And I, and I think, without hashing the whole thing out right here, I, I do think Paul and I have a different view on it. I think perhaps there's some legislative action that council needs to take, but I don't know that it falls under the meaning of a rezone as set forth in the moratorium, um, for one. Um, but I think, you know, if, if somebody really wanted to get cute about it, you could say, well, turns out that strip of land along the creek is my fourth phase. And so I'm gonna come bring you my stuff at the roundabout, I'm giving you my stuff in the back by Destination Park, I'm giving you the stuff over by the Walmart, and then my phase four is what's different. And then in, you know, by the time, you know, maybe the, the code is rewritten or the, the moratorium has expired, you could, you could then come in with that phase four to have an updated site plan, which the code just says mayor and council approval, it doesn't say that. I'm, I'm getting, I'm wading out into that territory. But you could, I mean theoretically, you could say, no, the, the new creek? the new creek, that strip is phase four, and get around it. So I don't think it's a moot question at all.
So Shane, let me ask you, when you presented back in October, you talked about the Green family and the Bailey family, and you guys had discussions with them about moving the townhome pods away from their property, from the west side to the east side. So are the town, on this drawing here, are the townhome pods, are they back to the west side?
So I think what you, what, maybe what you're looking at is a conceptual site plan that we shared with staff, based on the discovery of that creek. And so, I'm looking at the same one that I sent to Robbie, and they're on the, the west side of that creek. They're not up against that, that family's property that objected to having the townhomes right adjacent to them. But that's, that's really a conceptual sketch based on the creek. We just wanted to kind of show the potential.
Sure, sure. Have you guys been back in touch with the families to let them know that there may be a change, or they're...
We don't have a change yet.
That you're asking for a change?
You know, we don't have a change yet.
Sure.
So, so no, we haven't approached that family, because we're not proposing to put the townhomes anywhere different than we originally did. You know, we always want to try to communicate with our neighbors, especially people that, you know, interacted closely with us during the rezoning. And so we plan on, you know, interacting with, with, with any neighbors that have questions with us. But that's a, a rough conceptual drawing that tries to just demonstrate, you know, order of magnitude based on the, the stream that we discovered.
And I'm, I'm also having my notes here that the GDOT project was in play back then, it's still in play now. So that, to me, I'm having a hard time finding the hardship there.
The timing's different. You know, yeah, I mean, like, like, like Councilmember Duval said, everybody's understood that GDOT's going to widen 20 between Loganville and I-20 at some point. You know, I think that's, that's definitely not a secret, but what, it's not just, the question is, is not just, will the road be widened? It's when. You know, the when matters, and the when has changed by a year since the zoning. So, so it's not just, we're not just showing up saying, oh my gosh, they're going to widen 20. This is a problem. We're saying the timeline has changed, our commercial tenants have expressed concern about that, and we also have some other things we want to share specifically about the, you know, critical mass, and the whole concept of the mixed use, having things come out of the ground together, that we wanted to share, so.
Yes, sir. And then the last thing I had was, was to talk about what Paul just addressed about the detailed master plan. So that's, that's all I have. Anybody else?
Again, we'll vote on this Thursday night, an hour later, if that's okay. Anything else, Lisa?
Yes.
I know you do.
Thanks, Shane.
Thank you, Shane.
Thank you, Shane.
Thank you, Shane. Okay, item 2B is to, to let Paul explain to us about the plat development for Rocky Creek.
I'm going to let Mr. Robbie come on up on that, and then I'll fill in any other questions. But this is just perfunctory approving this plat and the development agreement related to the Rocky Creek subdivision.
All right. So the Loganville City Council on May 10th, 2018, approved the annexation of 101.846 acres at 2467 Claude Brewer Road for the development of a single-family residential subdivision. The council approved the zoning of the property as R22 OSC, which is a conservation overlay subdivision, and had a variance approved to allow the developer to disturb more than 10% of the green space. Since that was done, it has been a long and arduous process, and I'm sure the developer will explain that to you as well. But we are at a point now where the final plat has been vetted by every department. Every department has provided its stamp of approval. So in doing so, to get to this stage, it was felt best to put a, to, uh, put a development agreement in place to cover some of the concerns that remained over staff. We didn't want to drag this out any longer. Paul felt that a lot of the concerns could be addressed through the development agreement. So before you, in the packet today was, you know, 17 pages of, of the final plat. But again, it has been vetted by every department, it has been signed off by every department, and we do recommend the council to authorize the mayor to sign it.
And I'll just echo, I mean, so plat approval is a pretty standardized perfunctory process that comes before you. And basically, the purpose of the development agreement is whenever a, an element of either the public infrastructure or the site plan is not fully in place, and the development agreement governs what it takes for all that to come, to come to fruition and get put in place. We work with the developer, the owner of the property, quite a bit. This is a project that has a big force main that's running along Highway 81. That was one of the big issues, is getting the as-built of it correct. So we've been working with them for quite a while. They've been working with us for quite a while, and it's all ready to go before you. There's extra provisions and protections that are in there now that allow for an extended maintenance period on the force main and the pump. But basically, y'all will be approving this plat, and that plat means that those roads are, this is for phase one, there is a second phase. They'll have to come back before you to get approval of it, I'm assuming, in, you know, a year or two. And this will take ownership of the roads and put them underneath y'all's control, and then take ownership of that sewer lift station and force main, and under y'all's control, and then they'll start building from there. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
And also, real quick, I just did, I did print out, I know what was in your packet was a less than traditional, what we normally see for a final plat, so I've printed out something that you're probably a little bit more familiar with. It is still in multiple pages instead of on one, but you should, it's a little bit more what you're more in line with seeing.
Paul, I had a couple of questions. In this contract, it said, said maintenance bonds shall have a term of not less than 24 months. What happens if this goes, drags on, because they hit more problems and they have more issues, and this goes, goes on?
It is 24 months, and that is an extension above what your normal development regs are.
Okay. And then if they were to decide that they want to sell this property, or they'd bail on this project, and the next people come along, this contract will stick with that property, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, well, it's not very often that we get to put something on consent agenda on the planning and development agenda. So is everybody good with consent?
No.
All right, so consent it is. And then next is the TP-UDC contract, and I believe this is where we'll, we'll, we can also put this on consent Thursday, for Thursday night if we want to move forward with that contract. And this is just, last month, we made a motion to allow Paul and Danny to enter into contract, to go get the contracts, and then we have the contract, so we need to allow them to sign it. Did I say that right?
Yep, that's right.
So is everybody good with consent?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, and last is item 2, what will be 2D is to, I'd like to talk about the Planning and Zoning Commission. Keith Colquitt is the chair, current chair, has now been elected to city council, will be sworn in in January. His term expires in April. So the question or the discussion needs to be, do we want to post his position available for January, or do we want to wait until April? Robbie and I don't think we're going to have much, pending the Tuck Farm, have much to come before planning and zoning. And we have others that, I know Tiffany's position expires in April, and I'm not sure who else.
Uh, I believe it's Joshua Waters, I believe, is the other one.
Okay.
Yeah, there's three planning commission seats that will come up in 2026, uh, 2026, yep.
So if everybody is, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do we don't have any pending, anything that's going up before them between now and April?
So the planning commission, because we meet in the fourth Thursday of every month, we do not have any meetings in, you know, Thanksgiving and Christmas, because there's other holidays. So the earliest would be January. Anybody that wanted to be on the January docket would have to have something submitted by December 5th. So we'll know by the December meeting. I do not anticipate anything. It would, you know, just be variances. There's no annexations or rezones, so it could only be any potential variances.
And they would still have a quorum?
Yes, we would still have a quorum. And that, that's the other thing, is, is even if we do, even if we do appoint somebody, that person's going to have to reapply in April again.
Right.
Okay, so really nothing to take action on, we were just kind of wanting some direction?
I'd be fine with waiting until April.
Yeah, April.
Okay. All right, thank you, that is all we have, Mayor.
All right. We'll now move to Finance, Human Resources, Ann Hunsinger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one very small housekeeping item. We had a $3,000 CD at Bank OZK in a product that is no longer offered. So this is a housekeeping, we need to reallocate $3,000 from the park maintenance designation in the budget to be applied towards park improvements. I got that right?
We'll just need to, what do you go vote?
Just like a different line item on the budget, yes?
Well, I just had one question, which is irrelevant.
Yeah.
Where did the $3,000 CD, it just seems odd to have a $3,000 CD somewhere.
So this took a month of Sundays to find $3,000.
I know, I saw it like, this is weird.
So I happened to find it by chance, going through the Parks and Recreation Minutes from 1989, and the only reference I can find anywhere related to $3,000, the Hoak-O'Kelly Maintenance, was in the minutes that they said that they would set aside $3,000 for the Hoak-O'Kelly Maintenance. Now, that's what I'm going with, because nowhere in the minutes does it say anything about $3,000. But I did find it in the Parks and Rec Minutes. As far as Bank OZK can go back is 19, what did I say, '92? But this was in 1989 when they set this money aside. So that's what we're going with.
So you're just going to put the money in the Parks and Rec?
We're going to put the money, we're going to take it from unrestricted and put it in, I'm sorry, restricted to unrestricted, now he's about to correct me, assigned.
Assigned, got to move it.
And just move it, we can just say we use it for a park, if that's what y'all's wishes are.
What's it worth now?
Yeah, what's it worth? I'm curious.
$3,000.
So $3,000 to $3,000 a year.
We're only getting $3 a year.
Oh, wow.
Hey, could, could you find some more with more zeros at the end?
Maybe.
If nobody has any, maybe.
That wouldn't have definitive, no.
If nobody has any questions or concerns, I'd like to put this on consent.
I'm good.
That's good.
Everybody okay?
And then, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Very good, Ann, thank you. Now we'll move to Public Safety Committee, Melanie Long.
Thank you. I'm going to bring Chief Lowry up to talk about a DEA vehicle replacement.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. What we have tonight, our DEA investigators currently assigned a 22 Chevy Traverse, which unfortunately, he was the front car of a three-car collision in Clayton County while on a DEA mission. And the vehicle was substantially damaged. It's, it's been quite a fiasco with the accident report. They don't quite do things in Clayton County the way we do here in Loganville. We had to get it corrected three times, I think, Greg. Still not correct, but the insurance companies are moving forward with it. But we still don't know yet whether that vehicle is going to be totaled or not. It does have a pretty extensive amount of damage to it. So because of his duties and assignment, he can't take an unmarked car, like what Greg and I drive, and follow cartel drug dealers in it. So what we need is an on-the-lot, right-now-type vehicle for him. In the event this vehicle is not totaled, then hopefully we can get it repaired, and we can make use of it here at the, within the police department. So it, it won't be a total loss either way. In that light, because we need a vehicle on the lot, Assistant Chief Warnock reached out to Aitkins Ford and Winder, Loganville Ford, and also Maxi Price Chevrolet. And you, you will see on your, right up there, the best price that was returned was from Maxi Price on a 2025 Chevrolet pickup truck. It's $46,500. It's $3,300 less than its closest competitor. You also see, we requested three bids, we got two back. Greg talked to Aitkins, made the request for a written bid three different times, they never provided it up until this afternoon, and still haven't provided it before the meeting. So with it, it doesn't have quite as much equipment that has to go on it as a marked patrol unit that's substantially less there, and the wind a tent. But the total cost for that vehicle would be $50,052.21, including the emergency equipment. We will be paying for this vehicle out of our federal forfeiture funds, since this investigator puts the money in there, it seems fitting to pay for his vehicle out of that. And we would, as we normally do on, because prices do change sometimes quite quickly, we would like to add a 5% contingency, even though we don't believe we'll need it. But we would like approval from the council to purchase this, move forward on the purchase of this vehicle, an amount not to exceed
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions? You don't want to put that on consent?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
And Chief Johnson, is he here? There he is. He's got a site med contract to discuss, and some purchase of some fire hose.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So the first item is for site med. It is a annual physical that the firemen get every year. And it's a, it's always been budgeted, it keeps going up like everything else does. But it's over the city manager's limit, which is the reason I'm requesting approval from y'all. It is a budgeted item that is budgeted every year.
Okay. And this is just the physicals, and I heard you talking a while ago, there's going to be two more tests that'll test for certain cancers?
Yes, ma'am. We were able to negotiate with the vendor this year to, to work on lowering the cost on our physical side of it, to where we could add some additional testing. Unfortunately, age is no one's friend. A lot of my staff is getting older, so it would allow for additional cancer screenings.
Okay, thank you. Y'all have any questions?
And your firemen are certified with this physical, correct?
Yes, sir. This is an NFPA 1582 physical. At the end of the physical, I will get a, signed off from a physician stating they are fit for duty per NFPA.
Well, let me ask you a question. When you just said that, what if somebody fails? What happens then?
If they fail, we've had a couple of them fail, and once they fail, they are referred to, depending on what they fail from, whether it's cardiac-related, they're referred to a cardiologist where that's at their expense, using their insurance, and they get released, or further testing, and then that specialist signs off on them.
Okay, thank you. Y'all don't have any questions? You want to put that on consent?
Yes.
Okay. And then lastly, you said we need some new fire hoses.
Uh, yes, ma'am. So every year, we, we try to keep some extra hose on, on site. You know, we, um, this hose gets exposed to very harsh environments, it can be damaged. When we test it, over time, it can slip and fail. And so that has been the case in years past, which is why we've used all of our spare hose. So, you know, at the time that all the hose fail, is not the time that I, I need to go shopping for it. So, so that's the reason for the purchase of this, and it's, this will be bought through SPOST.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Consent? Okay. All right.
We're rocking in the road.
That's all I have for my committee. Thank you, Chief. I do want to remind everybody, though, tomorrow's Veterans Day, and our friends over at the American Legion have a nice program tomorrow. And lunch, if that starts at 11 o'clock tomorrow, and lunch is always provided by Tim Stewart Funeral Home, it's always a really good lunch. So if y'all want to come out and honor our veterans tomorrow, I look forward to seeing y'all tomorrow at the American Legion, and that is all I have.
Very good. We'll now move to Public Utilities Transportation, Bill Duval.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no actions tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Then we'll move to Public Works Facilities, Patty Wolf.
Trash report. Total litter picked up was 165 pounds, and the chipping report total stops 330, total tons 15.75. Public Works does it again, and again. Thank you, Jeremantin. tons, 15.75. Public Works does it again and again. Thank you, Jeremy and team. Did you want me to discuss the... Don't, that wasn't the plan, though.
No, I mean, no, it's, it's, I mean, it's public information. It's just an update on the toddler park.
Just a little FYI, we're putting out for bids, I probably should've known the information before I opened my mouth, next week, right? Yes. It'll be on the city's website for the toddler park. So it's moving along, just for those interested. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Also, for Jeremy, they got the American flags up around Main Street for tomorrow's Veterans Day, and that was nice. Many of the churches have them up, as does the American Legion. Okay, now we'll move to Economic Development Committee, Brandon Whitfield.
Thank you, Skip, and thank you, Melanie, for talking about 11/11 at 11. Also, keep in mind, November 29th is the Christmas parade and tree lighting going on here in the city of Loganville. 6 o'clock on Main Street is always a lot of fun, and... There's a concert after. Jake Rieger is coming to play his concert afterward. He's gonna be very nice. He's, his brother's been here before and came up through Loganville, going through a lot of, he's the one that made a big year. So this is his brother.
This boy's got a lot of talent. It'll be a good show.
Yeah, so come on out and see it. Quick update, the only update we had, our Economic Development Committee before this meeting, what came out of it, we discussed about it. We're gonna come back Thursday with our recommendation, but you can go back and watch it. But the short list is, y'all can jump in and say anything, if I miss anything, is that we're going to go ahead and have Paul go with a IGA with the, with 254, with the Development Authority, and to give them a little bit of direction, we're gonna write a little paragraph, a little, a little thing just to say what we would like to see on that land, so we can discuss that more on Thursday, before we can turn it over to Paul to go ahead and complete the IGA with 254. And, anything else from my committee members on that? Got it? All right, and that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Very good, Brandon. Then we'll move to City Manager's Report, Danny Robb.
Thank you, Mayor, you and Mayor and Council. Last month, y'all asked about the vehicle policy. So, our financial policy is, we get state contract, our three bids. We've been doing state contract. You know, it becomes an issue when you try to get bids locally. Some places get back with you, some don't. So, unless y'all tell me to change it, we'll stick with what we currently have in state contract. It was a discussion that was asked to be brought up, and I'm bringing it up.
Will one, will the state bid be considered one of the contracts?
Well, if we...
One of the estimates?
No. Well, I mean, I guess you could, but if I get a state bid, I don't have to get three independent bids.
I understand, but if you get a state bid and you get two other bids, then that would be your three. And if we could save money above and beyond state bid and buy it locally, that would be what I think everybody wants.
If that's what y'all want us to do.
If we can do it.
Well, here was my question, 'cause I don't know how the state bid process works. So I understand they go on this website, they type in what they need, and it comes back with a price. Can we not then put out a request for, hey, if you can beat the state contract, you know, here's what we, here's the state contract, can you beat this price? It's, can we do that?
Sure.
Okay.
But the problem is, how much do you mean, keep trying? Do you mean call them once and forget?
No, hey, if they, hey, here's the state price.
And who do I call? Do I call just the city business owners?
I would actually, can we not put it on the website that, hey, we have a, we have a state contract price somewhere? Hey, if you want bid, you got till Friday at noon. I mean, like a deadline, like, just come a deadline.
Do we not have to put on RFP or RFQ on this dollar amount? No?
No.
We don't have any spend thresholds?
Not for that amount.
Not, not in these dollar figures that you're talking about.
When you go over 250,000, you had to do a public bid, but this is a, you know, the whole point of a state contract is simplicity. You go in, you get it, you know what it is. It just adds more time if you want us to call local vendors, but...
And I do get that, but I do like...
Who do you want us to call as a question? You mean, call?
No, I think we put it out there somewhere. We figure out how we're gonna put it out there. Hey, we need three police cars. This was our state bid price. If you wanna beat it, call us Friday by noon, or whatever. You put a date on it. If nobody does, hey, hit the button, buy the cars.
We can put it on the website, but you're not gonna get no inquiries, because they're not gonna look.
And that's fine, but then we have satisfied...
That's what y'all want us to do, that's what we'll do.
Well, I have a question.
I think it's fair to let the, the local businesses have a shot at it.
Why not just call Logan Ford? I mean, are they the ones we're interested in? The city? I mean...
I mean, that's what was said, was the local...
Yeah, I don't, I don't recall any other dealerships being mentioned, but can we limit it to Logan Ford?
No, I would open it up to anybody.
Is discriminatory or any of those things?
I mean, you've got, you've got four or five dealerships right here in Loganville. I'd open it up to all of them.
Danny, do we have a list of commonly purchased, like, we generally buy?
Yeah, generally we buy Ford products. And then if it's a police pursuit car, it's a Charger.
Was.
What's that? It's Explorers now? Okay. So it's all, and then when you get into bigger departments like utilities, that there may be a little bit different. Sometimes it's random. Majority, I'd say 90% is Fords.
I mean, could we, could we put together a list that we've bought these vehicles in the last three years?
I would say they're all Fords.
Say that again?
All Fords, I would say.
Okay, but these models?
Mm-hmm.
F-150s, whatever. State contract is X. Loganville Ford, what could you do that with, for? And then get their initial list, and then I'd say you put a 48-hour on any new bid, you get a 48 or a 72-hour response time?
Yeah, I'm not giving them weeks. I give them days, like you're saying.
Yeah, so just Loganville Fords? That's what I'm asking.
No, I, I mean, I don't, I think we've gotta put it out to...
Yeah.
To everybody.
To everybody. I mean, but like, I think what Chief did with this DEA vehicle is a great example that, that Maxi Price ended up being a better...
Yeah. But I'm saying, specific model, you only got so many people that sell Fords. So is Aitkins Ford, Loganville Ford, Aitkins, I mean, where do we stop, is my question? How many Ford dealerships do I need to call?
We're not calling anybody. We're gonna figure out how we put it out there. If they're interested, hey, I see that they've got a state, a quote from a state contract. Hey, let's call down there.
Or what, or, if, if we, if he, if the chief says, I want an Explorer, and he finds one on the state contract, he's got that, he can buy that right off, I mean, with us, then just ask Loganville Ford here. This is the one we're looking for.
I mean, if that's what direction y'all give us, that's what, I just want clarification. I don't want somebody coming in and say, well, why didn't I get called?
Well, I think there was also something that happened a number of years ago where we got a quote from Loganville Ford, and then they gave us too many discounts, and we, it beat the state contract, and it was sort of an embarrassment to the city, 'cause we had to come back with like 14 grand.
Yeah, I had to come back and carry a little chewing from council a little bit while we were gonna give him 14 more thousand. But that's 'cause they gave us two...
They gave us two discounts on two parts on top, right.
Well, you have Tara there now. She's not gonna let that happen.
Where we went from getting these bids, going with a standard state contract, every dealership has the opportunity to bid on that state contract.
Right, and each dealership generally has a different car.
Right, that's true.
Right, and it's, and it's there because it makes it easier for all the governments and municipalities. I get it.
Yeah.
So even Loganville Ford could bid on the...
Yes, that's correct.
Yes.
So, why hadn't y'all been doing, no, she's going, no?
Microphone.
Danny, is the three estimates our audit requirement?
We are not set up to do state contracts because it's something you have to pay for. So that's why you're not getting the best price through state contracts, because...
Wait, why aren't you set up for state contracts? Because why?
Because you have to go through all kinds of legalities and pay for it. So, like, kinda like the BBB.
Right, but I mean, you could be, though. I mean, any dealership's eligible to be on the state contract.
Sure, we could, but we're not, we're not looking to do business with everyone in the state. We're looking to do business with our own city. So I'm not sure also what happened with this double incentive thing. I'm not understanding, we messed up or the state messed up?
Y'all did.
We messed up and we made you come back and purchase it. What year did that happen?
I don't know, but it was 14,000. It was for three F-150s. They gave me a delta incentive plus the state contract price. And I had to come back before council and get 14 more thousand to go do it. It was sometime in that first year, y'all.
18, 19, or 20. Okay, well, I mean, that's absolutely insane. I've never ever heard of passing that back to the customer, so I'll go back and figure that out. But what you guys are saying is, we wanna partner with the city, and I think Maxi and Colonial, who are the other franchise dealers, would do the same. So you guys don't just need to call the dealership and ask for a quote. We'll give you a person, and I know Maxi and Colonial will too. So what you do need to say, my opinion is, what you need to say is call those three dealerships, the general managers, and say, hey, we wanna do business in our city. Let's meet together. You give me my person. It doesn't take 72 hours to do a quote. It doesn't take 48 hours. It takes one hour to get you a quote. We can get you a quote back in two hours. And we're not interested in monopolizing the city of Loganville either. We want the other dealerships just fine. Like, we're unhappy that you guys called and got a quote. Maxi beat us, but at least it was Maxi, and it wasn't Aitkins or someone outside of this county or city. So I would, we, our plan is to give you guys a person to call directly and say, hey, which he's actually sitting right here, Matt, we need this. How much would it be? This is how much it will be. And you guys can shop us and tell us, like, well, got a better price, we'll match that price most likely, or we won't. But we, like I said last time, we all live in the city of Loganville. We have all have incentive to keep the price low, but we are not trying to undercut Maxi or Colonial either. Our suggestion is get their people, you know, I'm just the accountant there, so I don't make any selling decisions, but they will give you someone directly, just calling up. That's like calling Walmart and saying, like, how much is this? They're gonna give you a standard price. What we're offering is to give you someone specifically to call. We have a fleet department. Matt is right here. And I know the other two dealerships in Loganville will do the same thing. If you just explain to them, hey, we need a person we can buy vehicles from, we can all make the same deal. So it's silly to just call up and just ask for a quote.
Well, I mean, I think...
No, that's exactly what we do. I mean, we, we had a rep at Loganville Ford. We have a rep at Aitkins, and we had, I don't think we ever bought Maxi, but I know we had those fleet sales managers that we would call. No offense, it's, it's more than an hour. I'm telling y'all, I've bought a lot of cars in the city. It's not one-hour turnaround time. It's days. Hopefully, that's gonna change. Hopefully, that will.
There, there's just no, I, I mean, I've been in the car business since 2000. I've never heard of it taking days. So whoever you're dealing with isn't the right person, but I know I am the right person. I know Matt is the right person. And we are committing, try it one time and see if it takes longer than three hours to get a quote back. That's ridic, I mean, we're in the business of selling cars. Why would it take us three days?
So what we'll do is, we'll get the state contract price and say, this is what we want. What's your price?
I do, I do state con, I'd stick with the three. State contract, Loganville Ford and Aitkins. And then state contract, if you buy a Chevy, go to Maxi Price and then do a third. Get, get a rep at each one. And then I would get a standard template. We are buying this. This is being faxed over or sent at this time, at this date, and you have 48 hours to respond. And then that lets you off the hook for the previous.
All the vehicles are a little bit different. They're not all the same.
I know.
So, I'd prefer to just keep it one local vendor and state, that's two. I mean, if I had to start calling other vendors, it's just gonna drag out the process.
Well, I think it's fair. If it's not an audit issue, then if we want to try, dang, gun us to buy a local.
Yeah, let's just buy...
If we have a state price and we get one bid from a local dealership, and the local dealership beats the state bid, why would we not go for it?
Exactly.
I want, I agree.
So if we buy GMC, we'll call Colonial. If we buy Ford, we'll call Loganville Ford. If we buy a Chevrolet, we'll buy Maxi Price. Well, that'll be our baseline.
It's easy.
Or state contract, our base, if they beat it, then we'll go with them.
If that meets your needs.
But if for some reason the process gets difficult for staff, you have to come, I'm serious, and you have to come back and say, hey, it's taken us 12 days to get this bid. We don't have it. What do you want me, do you want me to do?
Well, I believe Matt committed to a 24-hour turnaround.
No, I completely agree. That's what he said. I'm just, since all the other dealerships aren't here, I think that that, I don't wanna hogtie staff either.
I mean, gosh, we all wanna buy a local. That's sure. That's the easier part.
Okay.
Now, if, there may be a situation where a state contract may have six of the vehicles we're looking for in a lot, and you don't, that may change things.
Yeah, it would.
I was in the car business.
Okay, I got my marching orders. The other thing I have is, I'm gonna make this a motion that we put this on the consent agenda to combine the work session and the council meeting for December, but, but we will need that to be an item to vote on for y'all. Due to our ordinance. So, somebody would like to make a motion? Or just put it on the consent? Yeah.
Consent?
Y'all agree with that?
Just to consolidate your December meeting, just throw that on consent.
And I'm just doing a little Googling, 'cause I've done a lot of state stuff with other dealerships. It looks like there may not be a cost to be a state contract, so if not, that would be even easier. If you guys were both local and a state contract, that would save a ton of time for the city. So maybe can you look into it?
We, we don't wanna do business with the entire state, so we won't get to pick and choose our business if we do that. From what I understand, we're not looking to...
No, I think you're right about that.
Yeah, we provide all the vehicles for Walton County, which is very, is a lot of vehicles. And if we do the city of Loganville, we're also using local vendors for the lights and the, I don't know, stickers.
Well, you just, there was a big cost to pay to play. And so you don't wanna, you don't wanna get involved.
Yeah, there is some cost in it. I don't know what it is, but I know that they told me when I went back last time that there was a cost in it. But the bigger issue is we do not wanna do business like that.
You don't wanna be the vendor for one...
Yeah, because we're using small vendors in Loganville for everything, and they can't handle doing more than what, you know, is just locally around us. We're not trying to build a huge police car business. We just want our own community and save our own community business.
Another item I have, it's not on here, but it's more of a discussion, but it's been talked about for quite some time. Working with Walton County, with the county manager about pickleball courts, we discussed this being at Meridian Park. We looked out back here. This was, I don't know, Bill, maybe a year ago, we talked about this. So I met with the county manager, and he gave me a figure of what they're looking for from the city to contribute towards this pickleball court. This is all just talk. There's nothing planned, but they're looking at 12 courts somewhere at Meridian Park, and they're looking for a cost from the city to contribute towards this. And it was 25% of the total cost. Now, ballpark is putting around 200,000 of city's money to go towards that. Is that something y'all would entertain me going further? 'Cause it would have to be an IGA with the county. But I think for 12 courts, it's a very used sport. They have one at, I believe, between. Is that something?
Well, four years ago at our first retreat, I said we should get pickleball courts, and we'd be the first ones in the county to have them. And everybody laughed at me. Now we're the last ones in the county to have them, so I say we go forward.
So, Sorel don't have them yet. Number two. Monroe don't even have them.
Monroe doesn't have them.
So we're the first city.
Municipality.
Let's do it.
25% sounds like a good deal.
So I will start negotiations with him and tell him I have a verbal from y'all. But I mean, it could go over, but I'm just, I just wanna get y'all's feel before I even entertain our conversation.
Yeah, 'cause they're gonna have to feel...
Is there a reason for 12? Is that the recommended amount, so they can do tournaments?
That's just what I think the fit and the, and the layout...
That's what I heard through the grapevine. I wasn't...
Yeah, 12 is required to have certain tournaments. That's true.
Okay, so 12 is like the minimum.
But they also gotta put lighting in, parking in, whatever they have to have.
It's not giving them more reasons to charge us more.
I'll have, Mayor.
Okay, very good. And now for the next hour, we'll move to City Attorney Paul Rosenthal.
No, Mayor, I promise I'll be quick. Let me start off by saying congratulations and a happy birthday to the Marine Corps. I know tomorrow's Veterans Day, but today's the 250th birthday of the Marine Corps, so simplify to all those Marines out there. My father proudly wore the uniform. Going on to my item is for an ordinance to amend your meetings to clean this up, so that you don't have to put this on consent agenda. We talked about this when you're having slower months. And so we cleaned this up in the simplest way that we can. You'll always have your regular meetings on Thursday. And then for most likely the majority of your meetings, where you have lots to talk about, like you obviously have found, found for this evening, you'll have your work session on Monday and then your regular session on Thursday. But for... But for, to be able to do it, not always scripted, say, December or July, but to be able to do it just when you see a slow month coming up. And sometimes that's not until about two or three weeks before the meeting, after this meeting's occurred. The way that we've drafted the ordinance is it gives the city manager and the mayor together in conjunction the ability to call that work session with the expectation that they would be calling that work session most months. But then when you saw that you didn't have the meeting need and you could do a consolidated, then they would not call that meeting, and then you would just have a single meeting on your regular Thursday. So that's how we've drafted it. We also just cleaned up another little section of subsection B that needed to be cleaned up a little more clear to be compliant with Georgia law. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. And then our plan is to bring this back before you next month. As we always try and do when we're drafting ordinances for you, we try and give you an extra month to look at them unless it's something either emergent or something that's very simple that you just want to go ahead and proceed forward with. So that is the ordinance amendments to allow a little more flexibility moving forward in your meeting schedule starting next year, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Could that be ready for Thursday?
It is ready now per our drafting, but again, in effort to try and always give y'all time to marinate over things, I'm bringing things to you with a month in advance.
Understood, understood.
But you already have the ability to take it and move forward if you want to.
When something is totally common sense, why wouldn't we do it?
I've marinated on it, has anyone else?
I've marinated on it when I read it, so yeah.
So then you can simply put this on the consent agenda for approval on Thursday night, and that will take care of it.
Done. I hope y'all want to, okay?
Can we do it tonight? Or does it matter?
You can, but I would just say throw it on consent agenda and make it easier.
Everybody okay with that? Okay, very good. Okay, now we do have an executive session tonight, so we'll be tied up with a few things. However, we don't want the night to pass because this is our residents' opportunity to speak on what they have on their mind. If anybody would like to speak, they'll have five minutes. When your time's up, we'll tell you. Is there anyone here who would like to have a few minutes to speak at the podium and with the microphone and have your five minutes? Don't everybody raise your hand at the same time? That way I can't decide who's first. No, y'all doing good. Everybody okay? You okay? Oh, gosh. I thought I covered Tara with the five-minute limit, but-
No, you didn't.
That's okay.
Okay, I have two things. So first, I want to speak from my Loganville Maker Studio hat, which is Main Street Business Owner. I know that Skip is leaving us, and we all on Main Street really appreciate all you did for us while you were mayor. You have been to visit and given us advice. You have done a whole bunch for us, so I wanted to make sure that that was said because everything that's changed on Main Street is a lot because of all the effort you put in. You're always there with us working, so we really appreciate it.
Well, I appreciate that, and there's been some others doing the same thing, and I get that. The main reason I spend a lot of time there, honestly, is because when you talk to the residents, that's what they want. And we have not been able to provide it over the last forty years. So it would be nice if sometime in the near future we could get it starting, get it moving. Yeah, thank you.
Don't count, don't count that towards my five minutes.
That's, oh, okay, you're fair.
Now, back to my Loganville Maker, or Loganville Ford hat. We, obviously, we came last month, and we talked about buying vehicles from here, but since then, we found out that there was an issue going on that was the, using the name of our dealership in the issue that was going on for the city. So Lance Goodson is our general manager or our incoming general manager. He's our general sales manager. He couldn't be here tonight, so I'm here now to make it clear that we fully support anything that's going on with the police department or Melanie or Danny, Paul, anyone who's involved. It has nothing to do with us. We have found out about it. It's been addressed by the person who does own our dealership. And from what we understand, it should be over at this point, but we wanted to make it clear that we are not owned by whoever said they own us. We are owned by one person who lives here in Loganville and fully supports Chief Lowry, Melanie, and anyone else involved in public safety.
That was concerning. That was concerning the dispute. It involved a relatively minor traffic accident.
Yeah, it was, but we understand that a lot of people have come under fire by someone who is indirectly related to our dealership. And we did not know, we knew about it, but we didn't know about it. Some more details have come out, so our owner is on top of that as of Monday, making sure that that is over.
Okay, very good. Thank you. One less thing. We spend our time working on other things, okay? So I guess at this point in time, we need a motion to adjourn this meeting and go into the executive session.
So move.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, we're moving into the executive session.